Fuck it. Hey, what the fuck you doing, man?
What are you doing, bro?
Man, hell no, fuck this, man.
Alright, we got issues, man.
Fuck them, you crazy, sick-ass motherfucker, man.
Dude, what's up with you, man? Now you're up to something, right?
Lafayette who?
Lafayette Street.
Oh, is that where you live?
Can't put that on YouTube, come on, dog. That dog's cool. Hey, so what's up with J.C. Park? It's like, how many stitches does it take to change a light bulb? You know, it's like a Pearl joke, right? Everyone, I can't even tell, dude. I can't tell, because they all got them playing, man. This is some shit. Oh, God, there's you.
Yeah, buddy.
I thought you were up in Massachusetts.
Yeah, where you need me.
Weren't you up there?
I was.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
You told him every-
My buddy.
You told him everything, didn't you? So what's up, what's up with you guys? Come on, man.
No, no, no.
Who am I?
Yeah.
Just a citizen. I've lived here since I was like, one?
Okay.
Just here with my grandma.
He got washed his short hair.
She got a new job?
Oh, she is?
So you knew Patty Cummings wasn't gonna live in her district? Um, back in February of two thousand twenty-two? Like, they're not even trying. They're just like throwing me off and stuff.
What?
Or something.
I couldn't hear you, just from back there. What'd he say?
There you go. So what's up with me, man? Alright, that's the thing, man. Oh, then they pulled this out. Check it out, man. They see down back there. Seven mess around, man. You know, but then I'm thinking, no. They'll do the same thing to you, man. You know? I didn't know you were a regular person until I saw you talking.
Yeah.
You know? Aw, man, that don't work, man. Alright, alright, you guys. Yeah. Yeah, she likes it. She likes it that I figured it out. Check it out, man.
Taking pictures of us?
Taking pictures of me?
Taking pictures of her? Oh, you got more, hey, you better stop that shit, man.
Who are we taking pictures for?
I have an earplug in. Just so I can look at it later, I gotta see what's going on. Because why you guys working this late, man?
Why are we working this late? It's late?
Let me get it. Like, yeah, but why?
Wait, no.
So what's your job? What are you doing?
Video off me, man.
No, man, where's the cops at? No, man, you're, you're crazy, I know, uh-uh. I'm gonna go right in there and tell the cops. By the way, our privacy.
Along with the union, the police are for the like-
Don't even talk here, man. Go right in there and tell the cops what you doing. Fuck it. Hey, what the fuck you doing, man?
What are you doing, bro?
Man, hell no, fuck this, man.
Alright, we got issues, man.
Fuck them, you crazy, sick-ass motherfucker, man. Get out, go in the jail, fuck this.
Easy, man, easy. Dude, what, what are we doing? What are you doing?
Do you want me to explain it? Yeah, go ahead, explain it, okay. I don't wanna start, they're right next to that. Hold on, I got another earplug in. I didn't wanna do it. Okay, you guys are with cop, paint the union, right?
I'm not with no union, no.
Oh, no, okay. Because they do all kinds of shit, man. This is very important, you know? And so I'm just in this, you know? They got, they got people, yeah, um, sorry, get the picture. This is real. They, 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 they do a lot of bullshit, man. I mean, it's so crazy. But, you know what, you're in it, right?
No.
And see, um, now if I wa- if I, if I get you guys a video, I can look at it later. Might be here later. I can know, I can, you know, I can figure it out. I do this a lot.
Do what?
Because it's looking, it's looking, man, it's shit, man. And oftentimes, I never tell the cops, I ever tell them. You know? This is very important, man. I've never seen everyone around the issue, man.
I don't know what you're talking about.
Yeah. Man, yeah, because I think so, man. Yeah. It, it like-
I'm not comfortable being videotaped, man. I'm not with no fucking union.
Yeah.
I'm not no undercover cop, I'm not with the union.
Well, see, yeah, I got, like- And then we're at the station here, man. I'll figure it out. No, they gotta hide over there in the wash. Yeah. Hang on a minute. So they're not with the union? That's strange. I should run. Guess they're not gonna be there. They can come down this way. Is exactly. Look at this, exactly, can't get it. This guy's privacy.
Creep, man.
Stop, I'm gonna run, I'm gonna run before the cops get here, alright?
You're a creep, man.
Yeah, no, yeah, I'm coming, run. I'm gonna run, the cops.
They're gonna get what's coming to you, man.
What? Hey, also, those painters are not with the union. The painters' union? At least they said that.
What's that?
They're not with the union.
Who?
The pa- those painters. They, or at least they said that's me. You know, the painters and ally craftsman union.
Yeah. I U P A.
What? Yeah, why aren't they with that?
I don't know.
And why, why is, why does that go on? How's that happening? That's kinda weird, right? So what are you guys up to? You guys are doing some sneaky stuff, man. Hey, um, I went down to Lafayette.
You're leaving?
I went to Lafayette.
We were in the middle of a conversation.
I know, I went down Lafayette.
I know, but it didn't, it didn't matter.
You're, you're, you're-
Lafayette?
It's- Dude, what's up with you, man? Now you're up to something, right?
Lafayette who?
Lafayette Street.
Oh, is that where you live?
No, I went down there. I learned it, I learned it. You go down there, right?
Lafayette Street?
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, that's in the south gate.
Yeah.
Where'd you go down there to see the sidewalk project?
Uh, oh, I saw that, um, all that, um, the police station. I went to both sets of roads. I went down to the police substation.
I don't know the- Chester Street?
Yeah, Chester Street and Lafayette, yeah. I did that whole thing. Pressed those cops and they're like- They're, um, yeah. Dude, you know what's going on here, man? You know what, you know what's going-
What's, what's your name? Mine's Mike. What's your name?
My name's Allosif. My name's Ken, but like, um, Allosif on the thing.
Nice to meet you.
Yeah, what about Patty Cummings? You know what's going on. Why'd you let that happen? You're pretending to be her friend and stuff, right?
I don't know anything about that. That's not-
Dude, you know everything about it.
It's a private matter.
What happened, okay, so then one more thing. What, what happened to the video from last week? That we haven't got it on our thing yet?
Nice to meet you.
Our video, video from last week? That guy's like- crumbling, man. Wait, let me get this guy. Let me get these guys. Alright, I'm running. Now I'm gonna get you, I gotta get these guys, too. Hey, my man. Now I gotta get you guys.
You have to get me.
Yeah, I do, I do. What, what, so you got the privilege? Show me some stuff, man. Oh, check that dog out, man. I can't put that on YouTube, come on, dog. That dog's cool. Hey, so what's up with J.C. Park?
You still lit?
Well, you, you got your thing in.
They're trying to make it, they're trying to ruin J.C. Park.
Yeah, you better believe it. You better believe the feds are in here, too. You better watch out. They are fucking gonna throw people under the bus. Everyone thinks they're the top snitch. It's like, how many stitches does it take to change a light bulb? You know, it's like a Pearl joke, right? Everyone, I can't even tell, dude. I can't tell, because they all got them playing, man. This is some shit. I'm from Boston, from, you know, near South Boston, South Boston, North Boston. They will throw you ass to the south, they'll throw you under the bus, man.
South, they won't throw you in the bus?
No, no, that's real shit, man.
Throw you in the river?
No, no, those guys are cool, like, no, they-
See, New York, they just shoot you.
Yeah, they, they don't-
It's all folk.
They use guns. No, you, you look at, like, um, every, they got, something's going on. Feds are in here, feds are in here. Everyone's riding. I think, and I'm good at this. You see? Yeah. Think you're in the top ten, man. Yeah, they left your, um- There we go, see? There's no way, man. Yeah, you with it. Think you're in the, no, you're like Mr. Guy, right? Man, look at these guys. They get at this, I don't know, man. You're like a dinosaur, dude. You look like a dinosaur. All these painters, man. Oh, Jesus. There, dude. Oh, I'm in a spot, I'm in a parking spot. Ends up the bush. Oh, Jesus, it's all here. They don't quit, do they? Hey. I don't trust these guys. Oh, God, there's you.
Yeah, buddy.
I thought you were up in Massachusetts.
Yeah, where you need me.
Weren't you up there?
I was.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
You told him every-
My buddy.
You told him everything, didn't you? Alright, I gotta get you guys. Yeah, I see you guys. Let's see.
Taking a picture of us?
So what's up, what's up with you guys?
No, 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 please, sir.
Come on, man.
No, no, no.
No. Yeah, right. Nah, 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 nah. Yeah, no, 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 no. Yeah, so what's up here? What's up, something's going on, man. What's going on here?
Like, what?
Why ain't you with the union?
What union?
Yeah, that's what I mean.
We just got out of work, bro.
Just that. As opposed to what? To what I'm thinking? What would that be?
I don't know what you're talking about.
Why you say it like that?
I don't know what you're talking about.
Why would you say it like that? You just got off work.
Yeah.
Hey, you gotta get more practice, man. He said he just got off work. You know, you can't say it like that. It don't even work. Oh, that guy's gone. What'd he do? He went around and just- This guy went around that side and then just disappeared. Oh, he's, he's running around back there. So you're hiding back there. I tried to get, I saw him. Hold on, guys. Check this out. Let's see. Yeah, yeah. Yeah. Aw, man, that don't work, man. Alright, alright, you guys. Yeah. Yeah, she likes it. She likes it that I figured it out. Check it out, man. Damn, man. Got the shit. They're pinning you guys. Alright. Alright, you guys have a good day. Man. That's shit, man. That dog is cool. They got the shit, man. I can't believe you. They're bringing everyone down here. So what, what's up with you? Let's see what's up with everything. Yeah, I guess not. That dog's cool. I'll see y'all later. I'm still gonna wash the brush. Man. They got Officer Bush here, and they got Lucas. They got the hook fucking thing. Man. It's like, fucking- Feds, feds are under the, feds under the bed. Feds under the bed, man. Geez, were they still washing the brushes? Hiding out, washing brushes? Nah. No. See? There she is. She's down back there. Damn, man. Ah, there we go.
Hi.
Hey.
How can I help you?
Yeah, what's going on here? They got- They got the, the feds are in it, man. Feds are here, man.
The what?
The feds, the feds. Yeah. It's here, man. I know it. There we go. There you go, there you go, see? Hey, just finished up. Finished that? Actually- Nah, both of those trucks are still down there. Hey, now I was gonna just shut up, but there we go. Gotta ask him. Gotta ask him. He's about to be bitten. Oh, let me get that guy. Yeah, hey, bring him on, here we go, gangster. Jesus Christ. I don't feel sorry for these guys. There we go, what's this? Oh, man, this is weird shit, man. Oh my God. Yeah, maybe. They're coming in. They got all this shit here. That's great. What's up, what's going on here, man?
Working, man. How are you doing?
Working, like- Doing, um- Like, hold on, I gotta come in, too. So you guys gotta do your- Late at night, it's kinda late, right?
Hmm?
It's kinda late to be doing, like, real work. Everyone just sits down. Sit down, work, I mean. Never seen it before. Yeah.
Ever work night shift?
No.
I have. Believe me, I guess they might all sit down.
There we go. So who are you?
City hall?
Who are you?
Who am I?
Yeah.
Just a citizen. I've lived here since I was like, one?
Okay.
Just here with my grandma.
He got washed his short hair in about two thousand four.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm only nineteen, man. I've never really seen, uh, my city hall, so I feel I might as well come and watch and learn a little bit.
Yeah.
Something my grandma seems pretty alike, and so I'm just accompanying her right now.
That's cool, yeah, yeah. Hey, man. I knew it. This is cool, man. I can't figure it out. I can't figure it out. There's the thing. Hey, man. There we go.
Oh, yeah.
These guys.
You guys from the ladies?
I'm doing that reporter back there.
There he is. You got more of it, too. There's a tail, there's a tail. I saw that. Hey, what's up with Haley? Is she gonna come back?
When?
Like, here, if she gonna come back.
Oh, no, it's us two today, I'm just-
I mean, she gonna do, is she gonna do city council anymore? Or is she still gonna do it? She used to do city council, when she stopped.
Oh, it, we all get different, it's whatever story she gets sent to.
Yeah.
So today it's us.
Yeah. Yeah, and what do you know about it?
Think you got me?
Yeah, no, something, there's something going on, there's something going on. There, there is something going on. There, it's right there.
Oh, the city council?
No, I mean with Haley.
Oh.
Hmm, yeah.
I know who sent you to come back.
Oh, there she is. The buildings, um, can everyone hear the sound between the two of them?
Why?
Yeah, um, yeah, I think, you think you're good, like, the echo, right, I mean, I think they're watching us talk, and then it's...
That's why we're glad we got our light, our lighting now while it was quiet.
Yeah. I mean, they, they didn't have local mics either, cross, like, they didn't even want, I think, I mean, getting the appearance clarity and put the second loud.
Can I just sneak?
Oh yeah, yeah, sorry.
To get in line with all that stuff. I just need to back up a little so we can get through, okay?
Oh, I have to wait.
Just a little bit further, because I got half the way, I kinda can't really go through.
Okay.
You're alright though, but it's gotta get through.
Yeah. What's up with going on, it's not here, it's... Look at this. Damn, Austin versus New York. Damn, that's what they're doing, man. Oh, there you are. They're gonna do it just like they did you, man, they're gonna do everyone else like they did you. You know what I mean, that's what they're doing today. What do you think about that? It's gonna happen to other people now, they're gonna, they're just what they're doing, man. The feds, it's the feds. But yeah, yeah, yeah.
If we win, it's...
That guy.
Cypress versus Al, yeah, Cypress versus Al on that side, and I watched, uh, like, friends with Alex and Alex and Alex, you know, you know, uh, okay.
Yeah, man.
Oh wait, no, I'm sorry, it's three of us again, it's, uh, Al.
Yeah, man. All right, guy.
It'll be good.
Excuse me?
Al, but... Okay, let's go ahead and get you through, so the guys are... We have a lot of people at this council this evening, so, um, let's go through them. Stay right, go, go through, go to the front row.
Yeah, man, you know, great, great. So what are you with? Just like, I thought you guys speak from here. Yeah, what the hell, yeah. Yeah, that's gracious, that's gracious, yeah, so what's up with you? What's up with you? Yeah. Is it, oh god, really? Oh, USA Today. Oh, no way, man, I knew it. I knew it. You ever do Boston?
What's that?
You ever do Boston? Yeah, yeah.
What about it?
You ever do that? I'm from there. Yeah, okay. And say, it's here, man, it's here, man, it's here. And don't talk, they, you think it's quiet, the echoes, don't even talk, man.
Why? Why? She got a new job?
No, she's in New York.
Oh, she is?
Um, so you knew Patty Cummings wasn't gonna live in her district. Uh, back in February of 2022, you were, um, speaking in that meeting, and you knew... You guys spoke about living in your district. So before Patty Cummings, you knew she was gonna run, you already knew she was gonna get all hung up and not living at the proper house. So, like, now she's charged with a felony. And it's actually you that set it up, with... So what, what's the deal with that? Like, and it's just, and they set you up, because that's why they put it in the, you know, in the meeting, they, they, they play all that game, you can't... It's like, how many stitches does it take to change a lightbulb? Nothing. Hey, man, hey, man. No, it's nothing. There he is. Oh, you came back, what's up, man?
Yeah, not much, are you?
Yeah, you know, what's happening with your underwear? What happened to your sleeves, your special sleeves, that was cool. Your Superman suit.
I decided to go pink today.
Yeah, that's, yeah. Dang it, this thing. There it is, see? Hi, lady, oh, this guy. Man, come on, come on, man.
Yep.
This guy. This guy, right? See, like, it's like, dude, it's like they're not even trying, right? You can't even tell, it's so many levels. Damn, man. The what?
Oh, yeah, we are you.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, the feds, the feds are in here. The feds are in here, man.
Yeah.
Yeah, and they, you think with the echoes, yeah, they, they, they'll focus in on anything to say. I mean, these guys, Kate Carlotta does it, you know what I mean?
I've been arrested before.
Yeah, yeah, I don't know. But it's, it's their, 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 this is, um, they're wrapping up, man. So this is it, man, they're in here. Everything's in here, man, the feds are in this.
Yeah.
They're on it, man, and they don't even try, because like, all, everyone, like, it's like, how many stitches does it take to change a lightbulb? That's why Kate Carlotta. Can't figure out, except, you know, you have people that don't even think they're anything today. Man, I don't know. Yeah. Hey, man.
Leave some.
Me either. Man, where at, man? There you are, so what's up with you, man? Like, they're not even trying, they're just like throwing me off and stuff.
What?
Or something.
I, I couldn't hear you, just...
Like, it's just, um, it's like, you know, you're trying, you know what I mean? Like, um, so, so what do you, like, tell me some stuff?
Hmm?
What, tell me some stuff, yeah. Oh, like to cover it up, the shit, the stuff going on.
To cover what?
That, like, the, what do you think it is?
I, I don't know what you're talking about, I'm sorry.
So, so why are you here?
So why am I here? Uh, I'm just here to, uh, I don't know, I feel like it's important, uh, I haven't really been to city hall, uh, I was here one time when I was really young, uh... My grandma's been coming to a lot of these meetings, she's the one who told me what was going on, she said that tonight they're voting on some plans for the park.
Yeah.
I don't really wanna see the park get changed too much, I mean, I remember it from when I was a kid, I grew up here.
So what do you do, like, do you have any work, or, or college?
The reason why I'm not more involved in the community is because I go to college in Arkansas, uh, I went there to play soccer, I'm not a crazy good soccer player, but I went there to be a junior college athlete and play... Just because I enjoy playing soccer, it's fun. I wish I could've gone to FSW, but, uh, they don't have a, a team, uh, and so even though that school in Arkansas is small, I still went there.
Yeah.
Uh, but I figured while I'm back, I'd like to be involved. You know?
What are you studying?
Uh, I'm just going for an associate's in arts right now, I'm thinking maybe I'll study engineering next year though, for my four-year degree.
Oh, that's good.
I thought about studying some...
Everyone came, everyone's here, right?
It seems like it.
There he is, there you go, yeah, so what's up, man, man, all right, that's the thing, man, just... Got that, ah, man. I can't really, I just can't handle it, yeah. That was too much. That guy, it's like molasses. Damn, man. Wow. Hey, what's up, man, so, look out for Lafayette Street, they're, they're setting you up, I think. They're setting you up, man.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
And even all the money and stuff, they're gonna set you up so everyone hates you. You know, I was thinking, you know, with Patty Cummings thing, you know, but then I'm thinking, no. They'll do the same thing to you, man. You know? I didn't know you're a regular person until I saw you talking.
Yeah.
You know, yeah. Yeah, there's some crazy stuff going on, so... Anything you say in here, they'll hear, the echoes, they, they cancel those out, I think. The feds are all over the place. Oh, I missed that.
Hey, how are you?
Hello?
Did you get my phone message?
I did, I sent your message back.
You gotta bring me the two, I'm in Archer, taking the block.
Oh, yeah, 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 oh, 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 oh. Aw, man. I'm Viet, I'm veteran, I gotta be... In Vietnam, I'm just... Yeah, man. Yeah. Got it. Hang, man. There's this guy. Oh, yeah, that guy looks gay, huh? He thinks he knows everything, man. So the painters were here today, right?
I'm sorry?
The painters were here. Are they crawling all up on the walls in here, stuff in here? I don't know, I'm just asking.
I don't know either.
I thought you were doing a fair. Let me just get this real quick. It's so great.
We're here to celebrate the beauty of the city, the beauty of the weather that we have, and the beauty of the people who are here. We celebrate the fact that we have a government that lets us do it, because we have a voice, and which we can speak and make adjustments. We celebrate tonight, development of people, that's our objective. We celebrate the nice development of people, that's why I put that.
There we go, see? He got everything, yeah, man. Hey, man. Please put that guy in jail, he's coming around.
Thanks.
Please put that guy. Oh, man. Hey, man. Ooh, there we go. See? Ooh, 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 oh, then they pulled this out, check it out, man. They see down back there, ooh. Said we messing around, man. Hey, what would these guys just? Check it out, man. It's a diversion, though, anyway. Could be. Isn't that cool? Ooh, some weird stuff, man. Oh, there he is. You saw a cool video I cut, right? Your feature Y? I can't say.
No, this guy's no, this is no better.